51.125 or 551.127 of the Texas government code that have been suspended by order of the governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on April the 7th, 2020, beginning at 4:02 PM will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 5:00 PM. Thank you. At this time, we will reconvene into open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for April the 7th, 2020, beginning at 5:25 PM. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Bowie Hogg in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States-
Of America- To the Republic of Japan- One nation- God- Indivisible- With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hogg. A little delayed, but we were all in attendance there. Please, everyone that's on the call, please make sure that you've silenced your cell phones and have your background as silent as possible to avoid any disruptions to those that are watching us. And now, if you would please, all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now we come to our open form of agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any cards on file?
No ma'am, we have no requested registered speakers for today's meeting.
Thank you very much. So we will move on. Our next on our agenda is our discussion action item. Consider the possi- consider and possibly take action on a resolution for suspension of board policies, EIA, local and EIC local. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for the board's consideration this resolution. And the resolution would allow the district to adjust grading practices, grading policies, GPA policy, course credit, and how you acquire course credit, and things of that nature that we'll present tonight. I will share that, as you know, this has been a challenging time for our students and our families, and for our staff. And it continues to be. I am very proud of our staff, from food services to security to curriculum staff to teachers, principals, and central administrators. The work that they're doing is monumental, and they have done an exceptional job. Very proud of our district. There are many things to consider during this time. Probably the first and foremost is to consider the condition of our students and the families as they are dealing with this closure like everybody else is. And we know that as the days pass and the weeks pass, it becomes more difficult, more challenging, and certainly more stressful. We see that in the meal services that we provide. We see the volume of need. We see it in our device distribution of laptops and iPads, in the thousands for our families that need devices, and still getting requests. And our commitment is that we're going to fill every request we get. It may take us a little bit, but we're going to fill those requests. And we know the stresses that the families are dealing with. We've had a responsible plan to engage our students and continue instruction, understanding that any plan of online and at-home learning is less than ideal, not only for Arlington, but anywhere in the state of Texas or the country. Because there's nothing that really replaces the interaction of a teacher and a student on a daily basis, on a frequent basis, on a way that can be supported through special programs, special needs, interventions, tutoring, extended learning, enrichment. Those things happen by constant and frequent contact on a routine basis. The routine of our students and our staff and our families and our community has been disrupted. And we try to bring as much normalcy to that with a responsible rollout, understanding that our teachers have to gear up also and be trained on how to deliver online instruction. That wasn't part of this year's plan, to go completely online and to deliver online instruction. Wasn't a part of our plan or anybody's plan. And so to retool that takes some time and patience, but also takes some responsible rollout. I shared in my update that, you know, we anticipated that we would be in this for a longer haul. It would not be for one or two days or a week or two. It's going to be for several weeks. And so, understanding that, we want to increase our success rate and our level of success. So we responsibly rolled that out. We're coming into Phase 3, which has more direct instruction by teachers and has more of an accounting in terms of the performance of students. And so we want to be very mindful, and you'll see in this resolution, this presentation, being very mindful of that phase that we're entering. And if I could frame it from a larger perspective, the big decisions that teachers and our staff are going to make that are going to have major implications for students is promotion, retention, do they award credit? Do they continue the instruction in the summer? And what kind of support do the students need in the fall? Those are big decisions. It's important to focus during this closure on this period of time. But quite frankly, the bigger decision is about the overall performance of our students and the teacher's role in that, but also the teacher's flexibility in that. And so those decisions are coming towards the end of the year, like they come every year. This one is a different one because it's coming with this big gap in this closure period. But we're mindful that those decisions have to be made, whether a student gets retained or promoted or gets their credit, what's their rank, how do we, what's their recognition at graduation, you know, and things like that. So that, this resolution addresses those things, but the big frame is understanding that there will be gaps. And how do we meet our ideal, which is our ideal is for students to learn the material? That's our ideal, is for them to acquire the skills. And in our, from our perspective, and you'll hear tonight from Dr. Words, it is making sure that students have the maximum opportunity, not that they're not held accountable, but that they have the maximum opportunity to achieve that success. And we know because of the distribution and things that we deal with, that there are a lot of inequities. And that's just not Arlington, that's across this country. And this agitates, this online and at-home agitates that disparity in many ways. But we're doing our part, and that's part of this resolution that we asked the board to consider. And I know you've thought about a lot about this as well, as to how can we be fair? How can we hold students accountable? How can we provide teachers flexibility in this period of time from our policies that, under normal circumstances, work really well? Because we've had those policies for a number of years. So it's in that spirit that we bring this resolution to reframe how we're going to grade. Couple more thoughts. We completely understand that these are major life decisions as well for students. To not go on to the next grade, to not get a credit or to get a credit are big and important decisions, and we want to be very mindful of that. I want to thank ahead of time our curriculum staff, our principals, our counselors, our teachers. They provided a lot of input for this resolution, and the input is something that we take very seriously. We understand there's still some unknowns. The NCAA and their ruling on how they calculate GPA and things like that is still an unknown, and we're going to deal with that. We think we'll have clarity from them at some point, and we have a plan for that. But the known is this, and then I'm going to turn it back to President Mays and Dr. Words, but the known is this. The known is that we can take comfort in the fact that we have a team in Arlington ISD that can accomplish anything, a team that can get through anything. We have a team that can go through this grading procedures and processes and close out a year and everything that needs to be done. We have the people in our organization that can accomplish that. And how, why am I so confident of that? Because I've seen it, and we've all seen it. We've seen it in the food distribution, device distribution, the thoughtfulness in training and the thoughtfulness in providing lessons and things like that. So we can take comfort in that, and I share that with our community as well. We can take comfort in the fact that we have an exceptional AISD team that includes our board, our leadership, our teachers, our food service, our custodians, our security, our principals, et cetera. So with that, I know we can accomplish this, and I know we can get through this. But these are important decisions for students and their future, and we want to be very mindful. And I think what you're going to see tonight is that mindfulness from a system that is putting the students at the center of our decisions like we always do, and that's a mainstay for Arlington ISD. So with that, President Mays, I'll turn it over to Dr. Words for him to take us through the presentation of the specifics of the resolution and how we move forward. So, Dr. Words. You're muted.
There we go. Sorry about that. Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. Thank you for inviting me here this evening to share with you our proposal for how to modify or give some flexibility in terms of our grades and graduation guidelines that we use during this COVID-19 closure. I do want to just reiterate what Dr. Cavassos has said, which is, "Our goal really is to try to provide a space where our kids can be as successful as possible." You know, we've heard lots of people talk about the importance of grace in this time, and we want to make sure that whatever we're doing not only considers the impact that this situation has had on the lives of our families, including our parents and their life, but also in terms of our students' academic success as they finish out their school year. It's important, as I go through here, that I set the context in terms of some of our mindset in that way around this idea of grace and flexibility is, we've tried to be very thoughtful about the fact that we have parents at home now teaching children, trying to work full-time jobs and having their children around them. And while we know that we can't accomplish the instruction of their students without being in full partnership with parents, we know that that's also not the case for every student. So we want to approach this task in a way that shows and demonstrates not only grace for our students, but equity for all of our kids, so that each of them have an equal opportunity to be successful. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go share my screen, and I'll run through the presentation, and then we could answer questions. Can everybody see it?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. So the first thing I want to do is provide a background, which I know everyone's aware of, but just for our audience, that we closed our physical buildings, our schools, on March 16th, following the guidance that was provided by Tarrant County Public Health. And when we say closing schools, we closed in-person classes, we stopped all events and activities. Where gatherings would happen physically, all students and staff travel ended, and all of our professional learning that we had scheduled that was in-person was also furloughed. And we had to think about what would be the best approach to providing instruction to our students and to make sure that our staff was well-prepared to do that in a virtual environment. So we have been implementing a phased instructional approach to online learning. And if you'll remember from our last board meeting, a couple of board meetings ago, I introduced the four phases. And the first phase was really designed just to quickly put access online to families and students, resources and materials, so that they could continue to stay engaged in the learning process at home and to minimize any regression that they may be experiencing or could possibly experience. We also wanted to take this time during that phase, which was the first two weeks of closure, to really start to increase staff readiness and assessing how many of our staff would need additional professional learning in order to really be prepared to deliver instruction in a virtual environment. And then also during that phase, we launched counseling and social service supports online through our website, including a hotline that people could call so that we could provide supports to families who needed emotional or social supports, either through the district or through outside agencies. In Phase 2, which we're in the second week of right now, our goal was to initiate district-developed online instruction in core content areas. So, and we also had select career tech courses in that scenario. So with this, with the difference between Phase 1 and Phase 2 is, in Phase 1, on the At Home Learning Hub, we provided a wealth of resources and activities that parents could do or initiate with their children or the kids could do on their own. In Phase 2, we structured these more in lesson format, and we placed them online in the hub using Canvas and a Seesaw. And teachers in pre-K through 2 were able to leverage district sources that were placed in a district library into their individual classes and work directly with their students in Phase 2. And students in grades 3 through 12 engaged in Canvas courses in reading, writing, science, and social studies and math that were designed by the district. And while the district was delivering that instruction, we have been training teachers all across the district, and we've had upwards of 3,000 or 3,100 teachers engaged in Canvas training over the last week and a half. We are about to enter into Phase 3, which is where we sit right now. And in Phase 3, that will start on Monday. In Phase 3, we will initiate direct instruction by classroom teachers to their own students of record in the core content areas, starting on Monday. And then the following week, we will add the elective courses and the other auxiliary-type courses that students will be engaged in. So when, during this, the next two weeks, our students will be engaged in their instruction with all of their teachers directly, and they will be able to receive feedback on their progress in terms of their learning. And to facilitate that, we have developed a, the best way I can describe it is a district-wide master schedule that allows teachers to interact with their students in a way that provides some coherence for kids and prevents them from being called into different live events or we would say face-to-face teaching scenarios online with multiple teachers at the same time. The very last phase is Phase 4, and while it's noted as a phase, really what we're talking about in Phase 4 is how do we begin gearing up for either summer school or providing gap instruction and compensatory services for qualified students who may need additional supports once the semester ends. So with that in mind, we created and posted online on March 16, the At Home Learning Hub. And I know many of you have seen it. We have served a wealth of students on this. We have about 45,000 hits every day on this website, on this hub. And it's divided into three hubs, actually. There's a student hub, a parent hub, and a teacher hub. And those activities or those hubs are a place where each of those different populations can go to receive support. It's, we really tried to design it with the idea that it's a one-stop shop. So anything that's instructional in nature, we try to drive people directly to the hub. If you have trouble with connectivity, you need devices, if you are actually taking your courses for teachers where they're connecting with their professional learning or their professional learning plans, all of those things are directly on the hub, and that can be found on our website on the main page at At Home Learning. So when we started thinking about grading and the implications of grading, there are several policies that were implicated that we had to think about. Pretty much the best way I could say is it's all the EI policies that relate to academic achievement, grading, progress reporting, class rank, and then also retention and promotion. And to do this, we gathered a task force of over 35 people across the district at different parts of the organization to help us in our decision-making process, to think about what are, what's the best way to approach this that would really provide students with the greatest opportunity to be successful in these unprecedented times and also do so in a way that's equitable for everybody. And so we included teachers, representatives from each of the content areas, including electives and CTE. We included a lead counselor. We had the counseling department and several other district department staff from pretty much almost each of the major academic services departments. We also included all the principals in this discussion and received recommendations from senior staff. And we took their feedback, initiated a draft, went back to a subgroup of that task force, got feedback again, and we've been working on that. And some of the things that we have been considering in this group is all of those things that we've talked about before, making sure that there was equity that was sustainable for all students across the district. We talked specifically about grading practices, how we would do grading, what role that would play in progress monitoring. We talked about our legal requirements and report card distribution, and how do we notify families and students when they're not progressing in a proficient way? We discussed the implications of awarding credit, promotion, retention. How do we, how do we think about retention and promotion and credit in a new way so that it's not so binary, but that we take other things into consideration as we consider a student's readiness for either a subsequent course or another grade level? We also talked about credit recovery and how students can think about recovering credit when they have failed to earn credit in a prior semester before closure. And then, of course, the implications that this would have on grade point average, class ranking, and graduation honors. So what I'd like to do this evening is to walk through our proposal for each of these things and then, and then present that to you in the form of a resolution. So when it comes to grading practices, our goal is that we provide and continue to provide feedback to our students and parents as they're working and do so in a way that's timely and connected to their progress. So for pre-K through 2, this can be accomplished in a variety of ways. We know that we're in a situation where face-to-face isn't always possible, but feedback can be made with parents or students by phone, by email, a Zoom conference can happen, teachers or some other platform, Microsoft Teams, for example. And also, they can give feedback directly on the platform of Seesaw. When a student submits work, a teacher can actually give feedback directly on the document and send it back so that teachers and families can, I mean, so families and students can see how they're progressing. And they can also record their progress in Otis. Otis is the platform that many teachers use to keep their formative grades, and those, that platform is visible by parents as well, so they could see that. One of the things we've had to consider is how to prevent students and families from being inundated with many, many, many assignments that are overwhelming from a variety of places. And I think in our effort to make sure that students have access to quality learning and that they are engaged and not sitting idle at home, educators feel very inclined to send lots of activities and assignments for kids to do. The thing that's important to remember is that when one teacher, when multiple teachers are doing that to a student and parents have multiple children and trying to work at the same time, it becomes almost impossible to manage that. And so while we still encourage teachers to provide assignments to students, we have provided some guidance to them in terms of, about how much time each day we should expect kids to participate in learning in each content area and how many grades they would take. So while students are submitting assignments, we're asking teachers to record no more than one to two formative grades in each content area on Seesaw or Otis. And the way that it works on Seesaw and Otis is a little bit different. Primary grades have, primary grades that are standards-based reporting have three different levels in which we monitor progress. They're not numeric, they do not receive numeric values. Students are either rated as mastering the standard, approaching mastery, or beginning progress. And in the Seesaw platform, this is demonstrated by receiving stars. So if a student submits an assignment and a teacher awards three stars in her book, grade book, in her Seesaw grade book around that assignment, that would indicate a mastery. If it was two stars, they are approaching, but if it's one star, it's beginning. The important thing about this process, though, is the stars may be awarded in Seesaw for the teacher to see, but the teacher will then have to make a comment on her, on the individual work that the students are doing in that platform and send it back to the student or parents so they can see their progress. Of course, in pre-K through 2, in primary grades, final markings will be provided at the end of the school year, and I'll talk briefly in a few minutes about what those could look like. For 3 through 12 grades, 3 through 12, it's a little bit different because they're not normally standards-based. They're usually receiving numeric value, but our expectation in terms of providing feedback to students and parents on their progress towards proficiency is the same as primary grades. And that can be accomplished through phone, email, Zoom, Canvas, all of those things. The difference between Canvas and other platforms is Canvas, parents can actually see exactly right on Canvas how kids are actually performing. So any kind of progress monitoring that a teacher does on Canvas, parents will be able to see directly. We are going to ask 3 through 12 teachers in a similar way to K through 2 teachers or pre-K through 2 teachers not to record more than one to two formative grades in Canvas weekly. Instead of a teacher recording a numeric value in Canvas, we are going to ask them to use the default of complete or incomplete. So in the Canvas platform, a teacher can indicate in their Canvas grade book, complete or incomplete rather than numeric value. So we will, that's how we will monitor progress. Students who receive complete, that is, that's for work where students have met at a minimum, has met at least the minimum expectation for proficiency. Incomplete would be where they're still needing to keep working. If a student receives an incomplete, they can, they are actually encouraged to resubmit that work as many times as they need to, because the idea is that we want them to learn. And teachers will adjust those, that grade in the book as complete when they've met the minimum expectations for proficiency. The other thing that's important in noting grades, in the secondary grades, where final exams are typically given, is that no final exams will be given this year or this semester. That will not be included as part of the learning process, nor will there be a grade or weighted grade attached to a final exam. Report cards are, there are some requirements around report cards that we have to adhere to. One is specifically around students who are not making adequate progress in foundational courses or core courses. And our need to do that is in a three-week period, every three weeks. So in the fifth, six-week grading period, we're not distributing formal report cards because of the lack of grades in that period when closure occurred. So students who are not making progress, satisfactory progress in a foundational course, and we're defining a foundational course as a core subject area, reading, writing, math, English Language Arts, mathematics, science, or social studies. If they were not making satisfactory progress prior to closure, so prior before they went to spring break, we are going to ask teachers to contact those parents and let them know that their child was not making satisfactory progress prior to spring break, so that we can make sure they're engaged from this and making progress between now and the end of the year. In the six-week grading period, we will follow the report card schedule that's published online. There will be a progress report, and there will be a semester report card at the end. At the end, in the six-week grades, pre-K will receive a letter of progress. And this is different than what they've typically received. Students in pre-K typically have an end-of-year assessment that's given, and that is leveraged to help measure readiness for kindergarten. We, it's, we don't retain students in pre-kindergarten, so it really is not a matter of promotion or retention. It's more about letting parents know how their kids are progressing. However, since that assessment is not available to do because students are not with us, we will be sending a letter home to parents initiating their progress or their enrollment into kindergarten for next year. In Kinder through second grade, they will be issued their regular standards-based report cards. In grades 3 through 8, they'll receive a report card, and their courses will be marked as a pass or an incomplete. And in grades 9 through 12, their report cards will indicate credit or incomplete. When it comes to a grade point average, the important thing to know about these grades is that no grades during closure or this semester, this second semester, will be applied to a student's grade point average. So all high school courses for this school year will only include grades earned in the first semester. And that includes high school courses for kids that are in 7th and 8th grade, for junior high students who also took high school courses. All, all, all of the grades that were- All, all, all the, all of the grades that were acquired and recorded in the first semester still um will be used for GPA calculation, but the cut point will be the end of the first semester. Students who participate in UTA and T, in Tarrant County College District um courses, including those that are weighted in our special programs, will not be weighted or included in GPA. It's important to note that in these two circumstances, if you take a course in one of these two organizations or another um organization such as UT in our OnRamps courses, students um will still receive a transcript and it will be numeric in value for those organizations according to their policies. But in our reverse attri- um, in our reverse articulation of those grades to Arlington ISD, they will be entered eh, as a, in a non numeric value and they will not be weighted towards their GPA. Eh, and transcribed grades on the gr- on the report card um will consist of um credit or incomplete. When it comes to awarding credit or promotion, what we're really looking for is what we're calling a preponderance of evidence. And a preponderance of evidence is really this concept about grace. We really want um teachers and staff to really think about what are all the things that we should consider when deciding if a student is ready for their next sequen- course in sequence or whether they're ready for the next grade level. And so we're asking teachers as they think about this decision that we don't just look about, look at, you know, progress or no progress in the grade book during this time period, but we consider several things. Their prior performance, their completion of the activities, their persistence, persistence in the coursework. And then there are several questions that we are considering, that we, we want teachers to consider as they, they make this decision in collaboration with their principal or the principals designate. For example, asking what was a student's performance prior to the COVID nineteen closure? Um, has the student demonstrated an effort to complete the assignments and participate in either the online or paper based activities? Um, did the work submitted by the students demonstrate learning uh in alignment with the teacher's expectation or at least a minimum expectation around the teats? Um, has a student, has a student's work shown progress towards proficiency even if errors may have existed and it wasn't perfect? And the other question just to generally ask is, do we feel or does the teacher feel confident that even if the student was not performing at the same level that he or she was maybe in the first semester, if support is provided, could that student still be successful in the next school year or in a following course? With that idea of preponderance of evidence, students in K through two would be promoted based on the preponderance of evidence focused around language arts and math. In three through eight, it would be around the core subject areas and then nine through twelve, which is credit based. Um, proficiency or adequate progress would be um considered for each course. The important thing to note in this scenario is that if a student receives um an incomplete or, or, or even for students who, who receive credit, we know that this is not an ideal learning experience. Um, and so we are um we are planning and intending to uh spiral curriculum in the fall of twenty twenty to identify standards that we know should have been covered and mastered in the spring semester and spiraling those into our fall instruction so that we can close gaps where we know gaps may exist for some students, regardless of whether they earned an incomplete or a credit, we know that that's going to be a need. We also know that um, that there will need to be opportunities for students to recover credit. Um, should they receive an incomplete, now that, I'll, I'll speak to that in just one moment. So if a student, um, if a student is, when we're thinking about this idea of incomplete or retention, it really goes back to what I was saying in a minute ago, which is about this idea of equity and preponderance of evidence. The reality is, is that this scenario that we find ourselves in enclosure is not equitable. There really are distinct differences that families struggle with depending upon their, their socioeconomic situation um and the nature of their family structure and their, the availability of technology and all sorts of um uh underlying challenges. And so we want to make sure that we take all of that into consideration for our students and per, apply this in an equitable way. And that's where this, this bigger idea of, of a preponderance of evidence is thought about. So if a student receives an I in any course, which would be incomplete, or really is going to be recorded as an INC, or if there is a recommendation that the student be retained for the, for, for the grade level, that decision will be required to be made collaboratively between the teacher and the principal or the teacher and the principals designate. Parent notification will be required and then summer school and credit recovery will begin for those students um in twenty twenty. Um, summer of twenty twenty, so that's right after school ends. The important thing to remember about credit recovery is the TEA, the Texas Education Agency waived the ninety percent attendance requirement that's usually required for credit. So in past situations, some students would pass the class, but they would, they were absent too often, so they were not awarded credit because of absenteeism. This requirement has been waived during closure, so this semester that, that, that waiver now exists. However, if, if there was a course that a student participated in prior to closure and they did not meet the ninety uh percent attendance requirement, they are required to make that up. So what we've done is we've, we have worked um with our counseling department and principals to identify any seniors who by chance failed to earn credit um prior to closure either due to a, a, a less than passing grade, so a grade less than seventy, or if their attendance was less than ninety percent. And we're also um work to identify if they fa- for students who failed to receive um grades in grade seventh or eighth, if you were in a prior semester and you were struggling in a classroom or you had a challenge in a course and you received less than a passing grade. Students in those two scenarios are being enrolled in Edge Annuity to make up credit. For seniors, that enrollment is being done by the counselors and students are being contacted by next Monday, April thirteenth. And for seventh and eighth grade, it will begin on April twentieth. If a student is currently in a course, and this is something that we do every year, if there's a current course and you are a senior and for some reason your course, whether it comes from TCCD or UTA or even one of our courses is, is scored for, as something less than credit, meaning you received an incomplete, uh, you will have, that senior will have an opportunity between May eighteenth and May thirty first to enroll in Edge Annuity and try to make up that credit so that they can meet all of their graduation requirements. So we'll be monitoring um how students are doing and, and working with our principals and teachers to identify any students we believe that are seniors that may find themselves in this situation so we can ensure that they um are provide all the opportunities possible to um acquire all the credit needed to meet graduation requirements. The other thing that's important to note about this is when it comes to credit recover, no penalty, qu- rec- recovery, no penalty or GPA weighted credit will be applied to any courses during closure for fu- for credit recovered in the future. So for example, if a student receives an incomplete for coursework that took place during this semester, they can begin immediately making that up as early as the summer, or if it's a senior, May eighteen, as early as the summer. And they can spend, they can work on recovering that credit. When they receive that credit, it will be transcribed in the tra- in their transcription as credit. But it will not receive GPA implications or be held um, or will be implicated in the great, in future graduation and honors, especially if you're an under, even if you're an underclassman. So the best likely phrase is if you initiated a course or um a half of the course during this second semester for which you receive an incomplete, you can make that credit up and it, and we will hold the same rules that were applied in this semester to those same rules, uh, to that, to those same courses as you earn that, that credit recovery. When it comes to graduation for seniors, uh, we also had to think about how does GPA um play a role in how we provide honors for them? And just as a reminder, we have two different GPAs that are calculated for seniors. One is the, the GPA that's calculated using the fourth and fifth, sixth weeks. Uh, and that is the GPA uh and ranking that is used to apply graduation honors during the graduation ceremony. And then when final grades come in, we run the final GPA that's transcribed that actually goes to their post-secondary institutions. In this situation, we are recommending that the use of great, grade point average or the grade point average and ranking cut point end at semester one. And that semester one GPA is also the final transcribed GPA that will be placed on the trans, on the, on the report card. If a student has a, has a grade or a, uh, like, like I was mentioning, credit recovery um, a less than passing grade that they need to recover from semester one, um, those students can still enroll in Edge Annuity, which we, we're, we're taking care of that now, and they will earn credit. And that credit will still hold to the rules of when that course was initiated, which was semester one. So the, the, that credit will be applied to their GPA uh in semester one. So the important thing to remember is really about the timing of when that part of the course was initiated. If it happened prior to, if, if credit is being recovered for prior to closure, meaning semester one or earlier, GPA rules then waiting apply. Anything that takes place during second semester, it's neutralized and the cut point is, is semester one. For students that are underclassmen or in grades seven and eight, their GPA calculation will also not, that, that's neutral in this semester, will also be held neutral for the duration of their high school career. So in the most extreme situation, if we have a seventh grader who participated in a high school course this year, received a grade for first semester, so they have a transcribed grade for first semester and credit for half of the course, and then in the second semester, closure happens and they receive credit or an incomplete. Either way, if they receive a credit, there will be no GPA for the second half and that neutrality in terms of GPA will be held true all the way through twenty twenty five and will not be calculated as part of graduation honors when they arrive at their senior year. So our recommendation at this time is that um with all of these implications, that the board adopted a resolution outlining a one-time modification of district policies and procedures on grading and related issues. Any questions?
Okay, um, I need to look up here, make sure I can, there we go, there's my full screen. So if you have a question, if you could just raise your hand and let me call your name and then unmute yourself. Melody?
Yes, can you hear me?
Ms. Fowler, my apologies, Ms. Fowler.
Right, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, so two, two questions. Um, normally I believe students have to pay for summer school, correct?
Uh, we have some situations where they have to pay for summer school and then we also have some that receive some scholarship. Um, we, yeah, yes.
Uh, so are we going to waive that for, for students that get incompletes?
Yeah, we have not, we have not discussed that, but I anticipate we, if a student receives an incomplete, we're not going to ask them to pay for the course in summer, we're going to provide it to them.
Wonderful. And one other question, um, what about our, our athletes? What are we going to do about incompletes and, and what that would mean for them for the next fall?
So that's a really good question. Uh, so right now we are working with the N double, NCAA to identify what's the best way to do that in terms of scholarships and then, of course, UIL when it comes to um eh, how they qualify for um eligibility. Uh, and we're working through that. We do have a solution that we can work through um when it comes to NCAA if they choose not to move forward. But our goal when it comes to um eligibility will ma- will be to make sure that our students have an opportunity to recover credit so that that won't be, uh, that won't impact their opportunity to play. And we'll work closely with the athletic department to make sure we provide that opportunity to students.
All right, so they would be able to maybe make it up in the summer and then be eligible for the fall?
Absolutely. In fact, our goal is to have um our summer online learning available. Um, should we not even be able to come back uh here really, right, pretty much when school ends. Um, we want to, like we normally would have it available, we just have to move it to an online platform if we're not available to come face to face, but yes, it would be available in the summer.
Great, thank you.
And Ms. Fowler, if I could add, uh, just real quick to your point, uh, incompletes have uh ramifications and they have implications, and that's true of all students, and we're going to reinforce that. Uh, an incomplete is not something that you necessarily want. You want to be able to clear that, so at the same time that we're providing this opportunity to uh catch up and make sure that you uh are able to complete your work, an incomplete is something that's less than ideal for a student because of eligibility, credit accrual, next grade level in terms of classification and things like that. And Dr. Words and Anita Foster and others are going to work on communicating the implications of an incomplete because some students may not have dealt with that before. Uh, and so to your point, it is something we're going to provide opportunities in the summer uh to clear uh those incompletes.
And will that information be available on the homepage?
Yes, ma'am, it'll be part of all our FAQs, our learning hub, our continued communication. We know that our, this communication will have to continue throughout our closure period. We, we can say it once, but we've said it often uh on some other uh information that we share. So we will spread this and continue to share this often.
All right, one other question. Do we anticipate that maybe parents will be unhappy with the extra work that students are doing or, or if they're in dual credit and now that they're not getting those grade points?
So it's important to note that um I can't really speak to whether, how people feel. I think in this situation, it's going to be impossible to make everyone happy. Um, I think the point that we've tried to take around these decisions is that we're trying to do what's right by all kids and apply the same rules in an equitable way for all students. Um, and I think the thing that's important to note in terms of dual credit is they will still have a grade point average at those locations, meaning at Tarrant County College District, at UTA. If they choose to accept a transcripted grade on our OnRamps course with UT, those are all still transcribed grades and a GPA at those institutions will still exist. Well, all we're doing in our side of it is during this semester is we're neutralizing that because we have to create an equitable way. Um, because like you had mentioned, like we had said, it could really go either direction. It's not ideal really for anybody. Some students may find this um easy to deal with and other students may really struggle, some have resources, some don't. And so we try to really go into this situation with that mindset of how do we apply the same rule, which normally if you think about it, well, in any circumstance, the same rules are applied to everyone. There is no, there is, where, there is equity in the application of board policy. And so we tried to find a, a space that would, would be able to maximize that same um for all students and do so in a way which honestly would try to benefit our students because to what Dr. Cavasus was just saying, an incomplete is not ideal. You don't get credit if you have an incomplete and it can, it, it impacts you. So what we wanted to do is find a way to provide as much generosity to students as possible and also still have a sense of accountability to do the work.
Thank you, and I think we need to rely on our teachers that know their students and like with students that uh have five oh fours and some of those special needs students, I think the teachers know them best, whether they're doing their best and, and, and working through the material. So I hope we'll, we'll rely on our teachers to make a lot of judgment for us.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President May. Uh, thank you, Dr. Works and staff, and I know this is an in, you know, a tough situation of something we hadn't planned out to figure out, but reading y'all's plan and uh and looking at what other districts are doing around the state, I think it's a very fair, um, equitable plan to go in, so uh I'm in support. Let me ask a couple of questions, though. How long will that incomplete stay an incomplete before it becomes a, you know, in essence, an incomplete's really a failing grade now, but how long before we don't allow them to make that up? So if it's a ninth grader and they get an incomplete on that, are they able to, is that just going to stay an incomplete for two years? How, or do we have a timeline or, or does it even matter how long it sits?
So that's a good question. The answer really is it doesn't matter, meaning they will, it will stay there indefinitely until they correct it. And the reason being is because incomplete simply means there's no awarded credit. And credit has to be awarded in order for a student to graduate. So it really is not, it doesn't make a difference to transfer that into a failing grade because you, in order for you to have a failing, even if you have a failing grade, there's still no credit awarded in that situation. So when a student receives an incomplete, we're going to encourage them to enroll right away to start recovering that credit as soon as possible. But let's say worst case scenario, a student didn't finish for a year, it really wouldn't matter because as soon as they receive credit, that will be, that, that credit will be applied to their transcript and then they will have met graduation requirements. And I transferring that into a failing grade has the same outcome. You still don't have, you don't still don't have a graduation credit. So there, it, it will stay as is and, and be modified as their credit is awarded.
Okay. Uh, you know, on these classes where they get an incomplete and it's a prerequisite class, for another class they're taking, are we going to allow them to enroll in that next year class? Um, you know, and, and listen, none of, I, I know we're asking, no one knows how long this is going to last, but I think we're all making the assumption that we're back at least hopefully sometime this summer um to get that we're back at least hopefully sometime this summer um to get everyone going. So are we going to allow them to enroll in that that class that they did, they have an incomplete for still in that prerequisite?
So prerequisite rules that have been established by the state still exist. So our task will be to make sure that our students um recover that credit prior to that initiation of the first semester. Um, we had this situation back in the day, we're on Algebra I and Geometry and the state kind of corrected, they rectified that a little bit. But as you know, there are multiple courses that have prerequisites and those rules have not changed from TEA, so um, when we have, what we're, what our intent to do is when, if we have students, which which we anticipate, which we hope based on everything we're saying to what Ms. Fowler was was talking about, that teachers will take the bigger uh, the the bigger picture into consideration. But if we have students that that do receive incompletes, and there will be some, um, that we work with them to get them enrolled as quickly as possible, so they can proceed to their to their next course. If there's, if they get stuck, meaning they're not ready for their next course, we'll work with those on a on a one-on-one basis. But that, the goal is to try to solve that before the next school year gets here.
So if I could, yeah, go ahead, Doc. I was just going to add, uh, Mr. Hogg, that this is uh rather normal in terms of, let's frame it from the standpoint, if you didn't receive your credit and what happens if you don't receive your credit? Well, what happens if you don't receive your credit is you go into credit recovery. And then what happens if you don't recover your credit, then there's already a system of implications for that that already exists in the in the system. I don't anticipate those will change. I think what will change is our intense effort, for lack of better words, to clear the incompletes, to work with students, provide more summer programming, provide teams of teachers through summer, expanded summer school online, because if we can't come back to the building, it'll be online. Case manage, another way of saying that, Mr. Hogg, those incompletes so that they can obtain those credits, because an incomplete or a non-obtaining credit has a lot of ramifications and those ramifications, they happen, you know, on a normal year when students don't obtain credit. And so credit recovery will be a big part of the solution here. Uh, and and so some of the prerequisite courses, uh, sometimes they're able to enroll depending, you know, if they're third year into high school and things like that. Uh, but those are handled by the counselors on individual kind of cases and and their graduation plans and things like that. But I think the the big difference here is that our efforts to clear or recover, whatever the the word we want to use there, incompletes will be intensified in a large scale, beginning really um this semester, if you fail the first semester. But if you get an incomplete for this this time period, uh, then we're going to work with you in the summer and we're going to be very persistent uh to to clear those incompletes with the students.
A- and I think uh, I think Ms. Fowler said earlier, you know, I think it's still, it goes back to, you know, we as a district have always, I think, prided ourselves on allowing teachers and principals to make those decisions. We've, we've resisted putting in mandatory grades and some others have done. And so finding those and just knowing that some of those prereq classes, um, there's going to have to be review over that prereq that a lot of those students, even if they passed it, we all know they're probably not getting the knowledge uh base they truly need. And so we know, you know, come September, October is going to be a lot of review from the previous semester. So um, I I I am, I'm hesitant to always say, here's teachers, you're going to have to put this mandatory base in, but I think in this instance, it is the uh, the right piece. Now, Dr. Steve, let me ask one question, you know, assuming that, you know, and I know our teachers are doing wellness checks and status checks and and figuring out how many kids are logging in, but making a guess of eighty percent kids are logging in at this moment, is, does that mean we're expecting a twenty percent incomplete? Or, you know, I mean, I know as we go, we'll start getting more to and reaching out and connecting the more students. But let's just say we don't have connection with ten percent. Does that mean we expect ten percent of our kids to receive an incomplete? If they haven't logged on and done anything in this last two months?
Yeah, so it, yeah, this this gap of instruction, if we have no contact, uh, which hopefully will be rare, just as you mentioned, Mr. Hogg, but if we have no contact with students, it's going to be very challenging. I'll tell you, we are already developing plans to be very persistent with that, uh, including uh, you know, mailing things to the house, to the address and things like that, explaining the implications of not having contact with them uh to make it, make it really uh clear as to how we're going to uh try to engage them in in the instruction. So I think, I think uh to your point, if we don't have contact with students, it's going to make it very challenging. Beginning next week, if a teacher, they have their cohort, just as an example, that they're going to be checking with and their family, if they cannot make contact and they haven't been able to make contact, beginning next week, the team of administration at that school with their leadership team and others, family school reps, if appropriate, and others, will begin to take those as case management and be persistent and try other means to to contact those students. But you're right, Mr. Hogg, it it's our expectation, we're going to make contact with as many as we can uh and understand their situation as to, A, why are they not participating? If there's extenuating circumstances, we want to understand those things. Uh, but making contact is going to be the first critical step.
That's perfect. I appreciate that. And you see, my kindergarteners joined us now in the meeting, uh, the joy of us all working from home. So um, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say for her and my wife, a former teacher, that Seesaw for kindergarteners had way too many assignments in it, uh, to start off. And I know, I know we're working on that and if you want hard questions, she'll start asking them, but that's all, that's all the questions I have and I appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Dr. Reich.
Uh, thank you, uh, President Mays. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So um, first off, thank you, uh, thank you, thank you. The amount of work uh that the district continues to do and and be completely nimble and and innovative and flexible during these uncertain times, it is still quite phenomenal. Moving in this direction is uh, uh, no easy task. So Dr. Words to you and and your team, thank you uh very much, Dr. Cavassos, everybody, really appreciate uh putting this together. I agree with Mr. Hogg. I feel that this is uh very well thought out. Uh, it is equitable, I am in support of it. I, I'm, I'm prepared to move, uh, to approve uh resolution whenever that time uh is appropriate. I know it's a discussion action item, but I'm just letting you know, uh, President Mays. So regarding, I I guess just a couple of things related to the uh communication notification, try to get everybody uh on online. Are are we looking at this week uh in preparation to move to phase three? Almost like a a registration period of of establishing contact with every family, letting them know it's starting Monday or what? So that's first question.
Yes, Ms. Dr. Reich, that is happening this week. The teachers are making contact, explaining several things. One, the phase three that that's hap, that's coming in on Monday. Uh, but also explaining, uh, here's our meal distribution sites. Have you, are you still familiar with this? You know where to obtain those things? Device, distribution, device request, kind of doing that that check uh on the on the family. But also informing that next week, this is what, this is what's happening, uh, and and doing that check this week. And then next week becomes now the cohort of those teachers. So a teacher has their students, their class, and then they're become responsible for uh engaging the students and making sure that we've made contact, tried, tried to make contact, and if we can't, then that gets kicked up to the team at the at the campus to be persistent with social work, with uh with uh family school reps and others that that could make help in those contexts. Dr. Words, you want to add anything?
I think you're, you said it.
Okay. Well, I I appreciate that. And yeah, the uh, to to what Dr. Word stated earlier, uh, implementing all this with the uh, the the foremost word grace uh at the forefront of everybody's mind, uh, it's so important. We have uh teachers and uh families uh of students that are still going through this adjustment phase and it's, it's, it's our new temporary reality. And uh, the the, the expectation uh and the the challenges as far as social, emotional, I I'm so thankful that the district is offering up uh services in that regard, because it is uh something that is going to continue. Uh, there's, there's a lot of situations that uh people are definitely hurting. And so uh, as much grace as possible, I I absolutely applaud that. Technically related to that, how, how are we set up uh from a a technology uh resource standpoint as far as bandwidth? Are are we able to handle, uh, if we have uh, you know, a hundred percent attendance, quote unquote, uh, participation as far as check-ins? What uh, uh, is it going to crash our system? Are we okay?
No, we we should be fine. And Canvas is leveraged across the country. Um, so we've had no connectivity issues. The, the only challenge we've been working through is identifying students who don't have connectivity and finding a way to get them that. But but um, we've had no issues with people, we've had really very little issues with any kind of connectivity issues um at all.
Good, good. That's great to hear. Um, and then again, on the the topic of 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 grace with these incompletes, uh, potentially, are are there going to be any, any differences in uh advanced notification to the families, to the parents? That uh, you know, before that final determination is made to to have them help themselves, help their students uh.
Yes, so, so we're still following the progress report schedule that's published um online. So three weeks in, um, notification will go to families about their child's progress, so they can anticipate um if there's challenges. And we'll also ask uh teachers to also contact those families directly and let them know if their child is struggling. So yes.
Okay.
Dr. Reich, to your point, and thank you for bringing that up, because we we have a lot of information detail here. But uh, to your point, an incomplete should not be a surprise at the end. An incomplete should be something we've been talking about and we've been trying to clear with the student and the teachers tried and and et cetera. It shouldn't be, here's, you know, a surprise at the end that I got an incomplete and I didn't expect it. So thank you for bringing that up, but that that's a good point.
Sure, sure. And uh, let's see, with those that are going to be uh in the the credit recovery opportunity for the previous semester, uh, that will be engaged. I don't remember, uh, I don't have the dates right in front of me of when they're starting. I think the thirteenth and the twentieth of this month were the those.
Yeah, that's for seniors and for junior high students.
Okay, okay. So do we have at this point an idea of of uh how, how many we have in that situation right now?
That's a good question. We're running, I don't have the number of it off the top of my head. The department that, so Dr. Horton's department, the Transformational Learning Department has been working with the counselors um and principals, and we provided them with guidelines to identify specifically who those kids are, so we can make sure they're enrolled. Several students who are earning credit were already enrolled uh in the course. So if you were enrolled in the course already, you, those students have been able to continue in their course already. They've already been working on it. What we've been doing in the last week or so is identifying students who should be enrolled, who have not enrolled yet, and we're manually enrolling them ourselves and then contacting those students and letting them know that they're being enrolled in a course to recover credit. And that will happen on the thirteenth of April for seniors and on the twentieth of April for the seventh and eighth graders. And the only reason there's a little gap there is because it, the manual uh registration takes a little bit of time and we needed to space it out a little bit.
Okay, that that's great information. And that was actually, uh, you answered my next question, which was what kind of load this would have on on the system uh in- intensively for human as well as technologically. So thank you for that.
The one good thing that I would say about Edge Newity that's been good is that they've been a good partner with us. It used to be, so we have teachers that serve in our Edge Newity Labs, typically where kids go to actually work the software. Now they can do it from home and it used to be where a student had to complete the work, submit it to the teacher and the teacher then would release the exam that the student would then take. And when the student passed the exam, they were awarded credit. Now that gatekeeping has been removed completely, so it's it's asynchronous, meaning a student can go through the course, submit the, the, complete the assignments. When the assignments are submitted, the 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 actual exam will be released to them. They can take the exam and if they pass it, we'll award credit. So they're, they can go at their own pace, that there's not, the gatekeeper has been um taken down to allow for more efficiency on, since students aren't with their teachers and they're able to provide them the same level of support that they once could.
And and just for clarity, because again, there's a lot of information and we we recognize that this credit recovery that we're talking about, that opens in those dates that we mentioned, uh, is for is for students that or uh that have already not passed before this closure.
That's right.
So it's not related to this closure at all. But why we bring it up is because we want to intensify that uh recovery. Usually students wait to recover in the summer and in normal situations and things like that. The reason we we surfaced that discussion today is, is because we're going to intensify the credit recovery. But just to be clear, that this discussion of credit recovery right now and the what's opening is not related to the closure, it's related to the fact that they've already failed the class and we want them to recover it. And we're going to be more intentional about that during the closure.
Right. And the reason why we focus obviously on the two groups we did is because their endpoint is a little more defined than an underclassman. So a senior, their credit needs to be recovered before the end of the school year, so they can meet graduation requirements. Seventh and eighth grades for promotion. Underclassmen don't, they're, they, they, they're promoted based on the number of credits they earn. So if they, if there's, if they, if they haven't already started their credit recovery um before the closure, which would have been halfway through our semester pretty much, we will start that process with them starting in the summer. Because they, but they have multiple years to do it. Um, our our primary concern is to make sure those that are going to be impacted the most have the, have our front of the line to get that work done.
Well, thank you uh very much. Uh, I I don't have any additional questions at this point. And uh, I'll, I'll release the floor back to President Mays. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Ms. Walton.
Thank you, President Mays. Uh, I really enjoyed the conversation and think I have a pretty good understanding about our secondary students who um, you know, are not participating and all that is going to happen and help them to get back uh to doing things. Uh, I'd like to talk a little bit about the very youngest, especially first and second graders. I'm sure we have some of those who are not participating in their coursework yet. And unlike maybe some of their senior uh brothers and sisters who can do it themselves, first and second graders are somewhat dependent on uh their parents uh for getting this to happen. So if Dr. Words could kind of talk to me just a little bit about, uh, how can we reach these kids? How can we help these kids? You know, uh, take advantage of uh what we can tell us what, what is the out there for them to do to um not fall behind.
So that's a really good question. And you're right, there is, this is an imperfect situation. Um, and we do have, there is a bit of a reliance on on parents, especially parents of young children where they're not self-sufficient in this way. Um, so in, to answer your question, really, our approach is every avenue possible is the one we're going to try to take. So we've tried to approach it from a variety of ways. We have the online platform from Seesaw, which will continue. Those, we also have provided um learning packets, um, that will be continuing to be published and um sent out each week for families to pick up at the meal sites. Those same pack, packets are, the digital copy is also being uploaded into the document, I mean, into the the hub. So parents who don't want to drive, but they want something paper-based, can print them if they want to. Um, we're also um thinking about how do we monitor their progress? So if they log into Seesaw and Otis, they they'll be able to see that progress, because the teacher will be able to provide direct feedback on their work, um, and parents will be able to see that. The challenge that we've had to kind of work through is is packets. How do we manage um monitoring and providing feedback to students who are, who are, who are working off of a paper-based packet? Because returning packets um exposes a lot of people to very um unhealthy situations in terms of COVID nineteen and all of that. So what we've decided to do is to initiate, um, is to really encourage teachers to interact, interface with their students in in a variety of ways. So for example, uh, and Dr. Cavassos talked about this a few minutes ago, uh, we are going to be tracking which students, we do not see any presence from each week. So if, for example, I don't see, um, I don't see Stephen. So if, for example, I don't see, I don't see Steven show up in Seesaw. I don't see him come to my Zoom meetings that I set up or my Microsoft Teams meetings. I don't receive an email from him or, or his parents and he's just gone. I will make an effort, I will track that every week and indicate which kid, that Steven has not been, he's not around. He's, he's missing in action, so to speak. And then I will do what I can as a teacher and principal to what he was saying, manage that case and pursue identifying where that child is and where they're struggling. Because we want to make sure that progress is, one, that they're engaging in work and two, that they're actually making progress. We also are going to encourage teachers to continue to make check-ins, like weekly check-ins with families, just to ask how their kids are doing, how are they doing on the work? Can they help them with any of their assignments, that kind of thing? Because we know that even parents who are at home trying to work with their students, they also aren't trained to be teachers or they have other responsibilities or other kids that they're taking care of. So that, our approach is really try to think about what, whatever, what is, what are all the avenues we have available to us that we can still use even in an environment where, where, where in quarantine, so to speak. And so that's, that's kind of the approach we are, are planning to take.
Thank you. One more question. How does the teacher know if a child is working on one of these learning packets that has been picked up at one of the food sites or might have been printed off of the hub?
So the only way they would know is if they communicate with the family. And one of the things we've said to, that we're, we're, we're going to let, we're letting teachers know is regardless of how a student submits their work, you can, they cannot be penalized for that. So if a student literally takes a picture of their work and sends it on a text to the teacher or the parent does that, or takes a picture of the work and cement, sends it on email or that, or they can't do either of those things for some reason and the teacher makes a phone call and talks about it and how the child's doing with the parent. That's really where the communication is going to have to come. We don't have a requirement that people are submitting paper-based packets. And part of the reason being is because there is some, there is some assumption that if you're actually working off a paper-based packet, you can, well, let me say this, if you have a paper-based packet and you, you do have connectivity, you can actually take a picture and upload that work into their portfolio on Seesaw and the teacher can see it. If for some reason that's not happening, then of course a teacher could reach out to the family and ask. And if it's because they have no access to connectivity and even though we have opportunities provided, but there's some obstacle that we can't avoid, then that communication will have to happen verbally with the families in, in relationship with parents. And I think, I think that you're, that's really the essence of what we're trying to get to even as we communicate with staff about this is we have to create a platform and a scenario where we lean and work in full partnership with families and parents because there's, there's parts of this equation that we can't reach on our own. And you've identified one specific scenario that parent interaction with us is going to be key in helping us to make those kinds of decisions on progress monitoring.
Can our FAQs or, you know, some of our publications somehow reach out to these parents maybe who have chosen not to participate and somehow build a case for why it's important?
Yes. Yeah, and one of the things, one of the things we've talked about too is when we identify, and this is what Dr. Cavassos was speaking to a few minutes ago. When we identify a student is absent and if I, and, and this is a good example, like if I'm doing a packet, I've really never heard anything from you. I don't know that you're doing a packet. That teacher will mark that student as absent and we will begin to investigate where that child is, which would include phone calls and emails and those kinds of things. One of the things we've also talked about and hasn't really been solidified yet, but you know, our system right now, if you receive so many absences, it's automated, sends a phone call to a parent, says, hey, your, your, your child was absent. That automated phone call can still be put into place in response to an absenteeism to try to encourage parents to say, hey, even though school is closed, school is not really closed, the physical building's closed, but instructions continue and your students expect to still participate.
And, and to translate that a little bit into, for families and others, Ms. Walton, part of that thinking is really the check is more on engagement. Have we made contact? Are they engaged in the instruction? I don't want that to necessarily be confused with attendance because that will open up a different tangent.
Right, right, right.
More on checking on engagement. So if we have a teacher who's connected with a student and they're doing their work, that's an engagement check.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I, 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 I see how that works. But, yeah, I, I talked to one first grade teacher who hasn't been able to find three of her kids come. You know, anything she's tried, anything the office has tried. I mean, it's like, where, where'd they go? What happened? You know?
Right, and that's, that's the challenge. And I think that what you're speaking to is the reason why the equity situation is so important because there are some kids in this scenario that, that is the case.
Yes, yes. Well, thank you. Y'all are doing a great job. Thank you for all the effort and, and thought and especially the grace part of this is, is critical. Thank you for this proposal. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. And I'll try to be brief, but I agree. Thank you. Policy, thanks for the focus on the grace and the understanding. You know, the reality is pandemics aren't fair and they've caused us to have to reshuffle our deck and, and get dealt a new hand here, which has only exposed the issues that come with inequity that we see in our district and certain populations here in Arlington. And I commend you guys, I commend the team for being focused on trying to make the best of the hand we've been dealt and providing us a, a system that will get us through this challenging time with the most benefit for the most students and, and within that equity lens. But let's start with some good news for our students. I think I read this in the, in the draft and I don't think we discussed it, but Dr. Wertz, I know there's going to be a lot of excited students that here, there's not going to be any final exams. Is that definitely the case?
That's definitely the case.
Okay, so you've made a lot of high school students happy. So we can, you know, give them any positive news, that's a good thing. And again, you know, the comprehensiveness of the plan. I know with any time you change things dramatically, there's going to be winners and losers and and just to assuage those parents who might be stressing, you know, they're counting on a boost to get their kids in the top 10%. You know, I think it's pretty telling and when you look at the universities like TCU, UT, A&amp;M and nationally across and organizations like the UIL in the College Board and really accommodating kids in terms of the AP tests. So I think that's a good sign going forward that could help assuage those kind of concerns. But if Doc, and this question's for both Dr. Cavassos and, and maybe you, Dr. Wertz. This is a great plan, but you didn't do it in a bubble, right? You consulted the Big Eight school districts, canvassed what was there and you were in close communication with Fort Worth and Dallas, were you not?
And Dr. Wertz, go ahead.
So I'll speak on my part. So I'm a member of an organization that has curricular staff from major districts across the state. And I'm on a regular call with them and everyone is grappling with the same situation. And so I was able to understand from, from, from smaller places like Abilene to Lubbock, to Fort Worth, to Dallas, to our neighbors, Grand Prairie. I even seen Mansfield to Abilene, I think I might have said that one, like all over the state, we've seen them. And yes, very much been in communication to make sure that what we're, what we're doing is not only fair for our students, but it's very, it's aligned to what many other people are doing. There is some nuance in different districts and that, that's a little bit different here and there, but overall, generally speaking, this is a very common approach that many districts are, are taking.
Yeah. Dr. Cavassos, did you want to add anything?
No, other than, than the, just the, the communication, not only with, with the other districts, but Steven or Dr. Wertz is on those calls with the commissioner as well. And we have a, a whole discussion, it was daily, it's now been moved to two days a week, but on continuity of instruction and the framework around that. And so Dr. Wertz has been very mindful of that, not only in the big districts, but across the state, aligning those things. He's right, there'll be nuances that are different. I think our approach with incompletes is something that is one of those differences. You'll see a lot of pass fail. And, and our thinking through input and otherwise is that for incompletes, it gives students the maximum opportunity to be successful. If you get to the end of the semester and it's a fail, fail, even if it's a pass fail, then that automatically means, you know, repeating and all these other things. We thought the incomplete was, was even more opportunity. Understanding that an incomplete is, has ramifications and implications. And that's part of what we talked about communicating. But that's probably the one that, the nuance that Dr. Wertz talked about that would separate some of this. A lot of it is pass fail. We're, we're doing pass and incomplete at this point and, and that's a little different.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Cavassos, that gets into my kind of follow-on to that question is the one thing I really like about our plan that is different from what you see in those other larger districts is that focus on grace, which comes about through the incomplete. And that's why I think you guys did a great job. It's one of the things that stood out for me. The, you know, I mentioned earlier that a lot of organizations like UIL, like the College Board have been also showing a lot of grace. The one thing we haven't gotten clarification on, you mentioned it, is the NCAA. And, you know, it's my understanding, I think you explained it, where if we do a pass fail for eligibility, that pass gets put at the lowest grade, that's a passing grade, which would be a 70 and a fail would be a zero, correct? One thing I noticed when talking, you know, I've talked to a few colleagues across the state, both school board, parents and, and others. One thing that I believe Fort Bend, in their resolution they passed last night, they specifically were in talks with the end of NCAA and negotiated to use, change it from a pass fail to say met standard or did not meet standard, which they had assurances would not have any deleterious effect on students' grade point average and, in terms of eligibility. So that's something I think we would look at. And then there's also the color model here locally where they translate their pass fail to a hundred, not for GPA purposes, but pass would be a hundred and fail would be a 69, I think. If, hopefully though, that NCAA, it's not just us, like you said, it's the whole country that is pushing the NCAA. And, and hopefully we can continue without this, without any modification. But we, you know, I think the resolution that we have tonight, if we have to make accommodation for the student athletes, we have the flexibility to do that. So again, to assuage any parents of athletes out there who might be sweating right now because this is all different, relax, we're working on it. The other question I had.
About that real quick before you move on. And I think I really appreciated you saying something to parents who might be listening to, to around this, where they might be experiencing some anxiety. We, we, we think we have a work, we think we have a solution on our end. Ideally NCAA would do what you're describing and apply that something similar across the entire country because everyone's struggling with the same thing. But if we get to a place where they need some kind of value, we will make sure that we do it in a way that's going to be good to our kids and still hold true to our model of not adding it in terms of weighted GPA or including their GPA. So we, we work through a technical solution. Should they choose not to employ it, we can do that and still hold our kids in a good place.
And to that point, Mr. Will Banks, that this resolution, as it's drafted and proposed tonight, allows for that adjustment to be made when NCAA makes their decision. And if we have to go to a hundred and a 69 for that purpose, then this resolution allows that to happen. Again, I, it, it's our anticipation that they will make an adjustment because this is a big issue for school districts across the country. But in the event that they don't, we have a plan and this resolution allows that to happen as we get the information. So ahead of time.
I think the most important thing for families to keep in mind though is regardless, regardless if, if some numeric value is needed at some point, it will not be included in the child's GPA or in the calculation of a graduation honors at a future date. That will always be held neutral in Arlington. So regardless of what's transcribed on their transcript to meet NCAA's standards, the value will always be neutral in Arlington for this semester.
Good. And I agree. That's, that's great. Let's switch gears a little bit and you, one of the programs that's, I'm a big fan of is the IB program here. Normally, it's my understanding, but correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, in semester two, when you see any fluctuations in class rank, it's because those IB tests come in and and the IB grades come in and then those students see the, you know, rise up and then you'll see some shifting. Where are we? I mean, is that, is that typically the case, number one? And number two, where was the IB program in terms of instituting their, their exams? And what is the requirement going forward for those exams? We have a lot of call around College Board and the AP exams, but I'm just curious if we have any information on IB.
So I'd have to look off the top of my head. I can't remember what the new IB schedule is. We have posted the alternative, we have posted the updated testing schedules that I can look at. But in terms of IB, they have been a little more delayed than I would say what we typically had had from AP. So, but the important thing, just to start off by answering your question in terms of IB and students ranking, IB really isn't, their ranking is not based on their IP exam. Their ranking is based on their, how they do on their course, their GPA. And so if, it's like AP tests, for example, what you score on your AP test is not counted, is not, does not reflect in your ranking or in your, in your, in your GPA, it's, 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 that's separate, that's towards college credit. Your GPA is really on how you complete the course. So students who are struggling, not struggling, but who are highly successful in their IB course, their GPA will still be reflected in semester one like anybody else's. The, the secondary question that you asked in terms of when their makeup time is to actually sit for exams is something that's a, that is, has been published by, by the, by the IB grade, the IB group. I can look and see, I don't have it off the top of my head what the, what IB's schedule is. I can tell you that right now, we posted, if you go to the hub, information about the, about IB, but I don't believe in updated, I'll have to double check to see if there's an updated schedule for testing. I just don't remember off the top of my head.
And, and I do believe that they have provided clarity, the IBO, IB organization. But to Steven, Dr. Wertz's point, it's probably better to look at the specifications, but I do believe they've provided clarity in regards to testing and what happens this year.
Well, what, and what we do know, I can say that we do know that IB organization has said that examinations that were scheduled between April 30th and May 22nd obviously have been canceled. And depending on what the students register for, they will be either awarded a diploma or a course certificate which reflects the standard of their work. And this is based on their coursework, but exam, exam updates, there's on our website, there's an exam update under the IB section that talks specifically around which exams and when, when they're going to provide them and are, are they going to redo them and things like that. But right now, there, it just, it doesn't speak to a specific date about when they'll be redone, it just says they're no longer held.
Okay. Okay. My next question was kids in our CTE program that were on, on track for certifications. And we, we discussed a little bit about that earlier, but just again, for clarification for parents or students at home, what are, what's being done, what, what modifications, what are the concerns there on the CTE program?
So. I don't know if you have the information, Dr. Wertz, but I, about that specifically.
I do, but go ahead.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
No, please.
I was making sure we had the right information, but so, yeah, in essence, Mr. Will Banks, the, they're working with those certification entities to make adjustments. Online proctoring is a big thing and some of them have allowed that, some have not to this point. Some have delayed, so it's basically on their certification. Some have delayed, so it's based really particularly on their certification and what the awarding entity would allow during this period of time. And that's still being determined by some of those entities. Dr. Words, I don't know if you want to add anything on that.
The only thing I would add to that, too, is the the difference between C T E certs and say A P or I B is they don't have a set date, like a star exam or an A P exam. It's almost rolling, like you take your exam when you're ready to take it. And so the implications of it are a little more, a little different, they're a lot more flexible. The other thing that we're working on with the technology department is some of our C T E courses have specialized software that kids have to have access to to actually engage in the coursework. And so we're trying to find a way for students from home to interface with their, with the with the computer software at the actual building, so they can begin to continue to do that work at their house. So those are some things we're still working on. But in terms of the actual exam, the flexibility for those exams is a lot, is a lot different than A P, where it's just a drop date.
The next question, and there's only one more after this, so we get moving to the resolution. You know, we, you talked a lot about making sure teachers were trained, getting them trained on Canvas, giving them the support they need during this time. One of the concerns I had was where we were in the teacher evaluation, you know, and sitting in their classrooms by their principals and and doing the formal evaluation process for our teachers and making sure that wasn't happening while they're learning something new and, you know, had their world turned upside down, essentially. The second part of that question is, you know, we were doing a lot of training for the teachers, but what about those principals that are coaching and supporting those teachers? What are we doing to give them the tools they need to be the coach to really help make those teachers, help those teachers become successful with this new model?
So I'm going to answer the second one, and I'll I'll do a little, I'll I'll start off with the first one a little bit, but I'm going to kick that more to Dr. Cavassos. But T E has provided a waiver in terms of our application of T tests, so the district has some flexibility on how we go about with teacher evaluations. I'll let, I'll let Dr. Cavassos answer.
Well, one question to that, because I noticed when talking to some of my other colleagues at other districts, they formally had to request a waiver through board action. Will that require future board action from us as well?
Yeah, so the state has provided waiver options for T tests. And what we're trying to do is very similar to what we're doing even with this process, getting input, what's fair, what's reasonable. So, you know, while it it may seem, you know, straightforward, it it really isn't. In some cases, some teachers have completed everything, they just need their final conference. And to say that, you know, we just don't have T tests because, you know, across the board, may not be the best solution. It may be, but it may not be for some teachers. And we're we're pulling the data to make sure we have a good understanding of how many teachers need just that last component for their evaluation cycle to be complete. Obviously, if you need an observation, that's going to be very challenging, and that's not going to be reasonable in this time period. So what we want to do is be very mindful of the resolution we bring to the board, or the waiver request, actually, that we bring to the board. We may waive the observation, we may waive the whole thing for this year. But we don't want to do that in a vacuum, and that's why we're still processing that with input from teachers and administrators and things like that. Keeping in mind that, just like these discussions about credit and incomplete and all that, keeping in mind that T tests also has implications for the future in terms of teachers and others. Some want to complete their evaluation cycle because they're very close, and and why would we not? That means they would have to redo it all over again and things like that, right? You know, when we start talking about those, and and not to go on a tangent, but when we start talking about the opportunity for differentiated pay based on, you know, assignment that the state is providing grants for, for example, well, that has a foundation of of some of this T test work. You know, you have to have some evidence of of high need and things like that. So those are the things we're we're being very mindful of before we come with a waiver. It intuitively seems pretty straightforward that we would just not complete that cycle, because how would we possibly do it during this time? But we want to be careful, because if we have a vast majority that only need that last conference, and and it's something that could help the teacher in terms of positively, as those grants and things are announced, we want to make sure we're we're careful with that. So to your question, Mr. Will Banks, that will be coming as a waiver request to the board. And today, we're we're still sourcing the the data behind how many are close and how many are not. If a vast majority are too far away from that closure, then that's going to be, you know, leading our waiver proposal, obviously. But we want to take our time with that, because it has implications. Just all of what we're talking about tonight has implications. So that's what's coming, that's the that's the work that staff is engaged in. And probably as important as that, we're getting a lot of input from administrators and teachers as well to make a good recommendation to our board about a waiver in in the T test space.
In connection to the other question around coaching, so all our teachers, you know, they're receiving professional learning directly online through Canvas. Our principals have access to those courses, and we provided them with some feedback or or specific ways they can actually monitor their teacher's progress in those courses in terms of proficiency. There's like three different ways they can do that, and we've shared that with them. They actually have meetings and support from their area superintendents on daily basis. So we're regularly communicating with them on that. And then the other thing I was going to mention, too, is we're putting together a coaches academy for all of our coaches at all the buildings to talk about how they can continue to support and engage teachers who are now providing structural in a virtual environment. It's that coaching in that scenario, or what kinds of things you would want to pay attention to in terms of helping a teacher is different than what you would do when they're working in a face to face scenario with kids in front of them. So those are just some of the things that we've been working on to answer the other question.
Yeah, I had one more question, but it was along the same lines of what Polly mentioned in terms of, and some others, in terms of benchmarking, kind of what we consider successful, you know, that first week when we go out on the learning in terms of the participation rate and how many students are missing, and how we're going to track that over time, but I believe you've answered that. And, you know, I'll just finish up by saying quickly that the feedback I've got from the parents, especially parents that have relatives in surrounding districts or other districts across the state, the fact that we have a very well thought out plan, we didn't force all our teachers to dive into the deep end, and our parents who are trying to figure this out as well. The fact that we've consolidated on two platforms and one notification. So the the complaint I heard from our relatives across the state were, you know, I've got a relative that had four kids, and they were, each teacher is doing something different. There was really no guidance. So they're getting reminds, there are some of them's on Edmodo, some of it's on Canvas, some of it's through text, some of it's through email. And so with four kids multiplied by every teacher communicating a different way, was, they were at their what's end, and that was just in the first week of instruction they had last week. So I think that's why our plan, and we've been getting kudos from the parents that I've talked to here, that it's, I was afraid we were going to get a lot of parents going, hey, why aren't we doing instruction already? My, you know, my friends in Mansfield are already getting, or my friends in this district are already getting it, and their kids are already getting it. But I think it's very methodical, and the focus has been on that equity. We owe it to those kids who this has disrupted the most to make sure they have access to an equal opportu- uh, tunity, just like any other kid for that education. So I know it's been a lot of work. I know you guys have been working crazy hours, and you guys are all saints, and thank you for all the hard work. With that, I'll turn it over, any, my colleague, Mr. Chapa, has any questions, or we're ready for a motion.
Oh, wow, thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mr. Chapa, is your hand raised?
It's not raised, but I I just have a comment.
Okay.
I I was just going to say, this has been such a complex experience for everyone involved. And I know so many people throughout the state are going through the same thing that we are. And the challenges that we face with in this district and in other larger urban districts are well known. And so I just want to encourage Dr. Cavassos, Dr. Words, as as you all talk to your colleagues across the state, and Dr. Cavassos, as you talk to the commissioner and other decision makers at the legislative level, our approach has been characterized by, as many people have said, fairness, equity, and and grace. And so far, the state has has followed pretty much in kind. But I would strongly encourage y'all, as those discussions go forward and planning for next year, I know we're all ready to get back to a sense of normalcy, but there'll be nothing normal about next year either. I mean, Dr. Words talked at length about the remedial work that we're going to have to do with with spiraled curriculum and and so forth. And I would encourage those decision makers to decide at the earliest possible time to give us some clarity next year on what the accountability mechanisms are going to look like. And I would encourage them to continue the approach of equity and grace, and let us know early on that we'll have a year or two go through the process of catching up from this year, because it's been so incredibly disruptive. And I I can't think of something that would cause much more stress for our parents, teachers, and staff than to know that they're going to be judged on next spring on essentially having to catch up students from an entire, you know, next year's expected progress, and then a third of this year's expected progress. And so if you can impress upon them that we would like some clarity on that as soon as possible, I think that'd be beneficial for everybody involved.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa, thank you for those words. Thank you for the questions from my colleagues, those were good questions. And very good comment as well, Mr. Chapa. I just have a couple of questions, and then we'll see where we need to move on to. Do we know or have a percentage of students that were without technology? I know we did a survey asking, but have we done any analysis to see? For instance, we had sixty percent of students say they didn't, have we only passed out twenty percent? Have we done any analysis of what we've given out to what was anticipated based on the survey and or other ways of asking?
So we we have some initial ideas of how many students have access to. So there's two different questions there, right? One is connectivity and the other is a device. And we do have surveys that we actually do every single year that allowed us to get a sense about what's the baseline for the percentage of our students that we know have access to least connectivity in some device at home, albeit it could be as simple as a phone, which I'm not suggesting by any means is ideal for learning at all. Then what we've done besides that is we have opened it up for for families to request devices. And we have, we have made a commitment that we would fill every request that we have. Trying to close that ratio is challenging, because what we don't necessarily have is just a a data set that says specifically which kids are now sitting today. I have, because let me give you an example. I might be a family that have four kids at home, and they're in four different grade levels, and operating off of one device is not going to be sufficient. They might need four devices to do that. Understanding that gap in a really concise way is something we're still working through. I will say, one of the things we are doing is in, we're we're conducting a checkpoint with families through our teachers and a survey to understand, one, do you have the device that you need, or do you have connectivity? Just so we can have a sense to your question exactly, what is the gap that still exists in terms of kids? And I also believe that if we have kids that become M I A, meaning students that are missing, for some reason, that will also lend us to to start asking questions to them as well. Do you have a device? Are you connected? So we're still in the process of that. It's not something that we initially went into disclosure already knowing. We do the general percentage of kids that had connectivity in our district based on their self-reporting on the survey we do annually, but not necessarily the percent of each family within their family in terms of device distribution.
Yeah, and Ms. Bates, to give you a perspective, and you you've seen some of these numbers, but we've we've issued and checked out twenty one thousand devices. We have another fifteen hundred that we're going to issue out this week. And all of those are request based. In other words, there's a link that's sent to families, if you need a device, request a device. Obviously, if you can't connect, it's hard to request. But we've had twenty one thousand requests and now fifteen hundred that are coming behind that. In these checks that we're calling maybe engagement checks, not attendance, but in these engagement checks, then that will be noted and will be much more sourced in terms of what is the issue of why is there no engagement with a student? Is it connectivity? Is it a device? So the twenty one thousand gives you a perspective of the great divide in 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 technology, just within our community. And to your question and your point, is it a drop in the bucket, or is it half of it? And quite frankly, we think it's a portion, and and it's an unknown of how many more. We do know that as we go through this, teacher contacting students and amassing this information will have a better sense of of the of the need, the connectivity with Wi Fi and hotspots. We're going to go through that same process of request, but quite frankly, hotspots are backordered for multiple districts, and we're ordering several thousand just for us. And that's going to be a slower rollout, and that's just the reality of the of the availability of some of these devices. But twenty one thousand is a good perspective of what kind of of coverage we're 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 doing fifteen hundred behind that. We'll open that link up again, because we know there's already more requests, and we will fill those requests again in in a in a managed way, but that's a perspective.
Okay, well, yeah, that's just, that's important to me, that that we have a sense of, particularly since we're moving to this is the only way that we're giving out our learning. And like I said, everybody is dealing with it, but that we at least have a grasp of who we might be missing out there within our student body, whether it's for the technology or for the ability to have the technology, but no way to to log on. And, you know, what else can we do to, I mean, obviously, if things are on backorder, there's not much we can do about that. But is there any, are there any other resources, any other suggestions? And even if there aren't, if we're tracking who these students are, then that might be useful information in the future when we're talking about incompletes or pass or how well did our students do during this period of time. So just something that I think is important to kind of keep that in mind, which also then leads me to my next question about the number of students who we've not been able to contact. Do we have an idea of the percentage of students that we've not been able to make contact? And in particular, maybe some of our senior students who we, I just don't want to see anybody get dropped through the, you know, through the filters for no reason. So do we have an idea of how many students we've not been able to contact at this point?
So that number has been managed at the campus level by teachers individually. We're in the process of putting our system in, starting next week, to amass that across the district, to get a sense across the district. Because before, our learning had been set up in such a way, at least the first two weeks, that parents could engage, and we did these engagement checks with with families to see if they were able to access the hub and were they engaging in activities. And then this next phase, the one we're in right now, we actually have students that are enrolling in Canvas courses, and teachers can see if their kids are doing the work. My own daughter's teacher reached out to me to talk to me about my daughter doing the work on Canvas, because teachers can enroll themselves in the course, even though it's being district driven, to see that. This next round, which is starting on Monday, we are going to do what you're describing, which is amass that number at the district level to get a sense of where are the kids specifically? How many at each location, what grade levels there, and who are they? So that we can case manage them more tightly, because now they're going to be working towards credit.
Okay, very good. And then probably my last question. So during all of this, when we get to the end and we're talking about possibly and probably still doing online through the summer, is there any way to find out if some of the students that might have struggled and got the incomplete, because maybe they weren't struggling before, that online learning might actually be their issue?
That's definitely a question we'll have to ask. If my my thing is, if a student is not progressing in some way, regardless of the reason, we need to understand what that cause is. There are some things that we can try to mitigate and other things that will be just challenging, but we can't solve anything until we know what the problem is. So you're right, if if online learning is what is actually causing the issue, meaning they prefer a a smaller face-to-face instruction, that will present a challenge for us to figure out how best to address their need.
Okay, very good. Well, just once again, I'll just repeat in a matter of three weeks. Um, the district has developed plans for online learning, distributed printing materials for work packets, provided meals, passed out technology, um gonna start mailing packets to students at home. The teachers have been calling the students to check in on them. There's been a lot of activity um that has been done behind the scenes in the last three weeks. And um my colleagues have already stated it, so I will just say that I'm really proud of what the district is doing um and just trying to make sure that the number one thing is to do the best that we can to try to mitigate gaps and make sure that we've um been able to provide the learning in the manner that we feel is best at this particular time in an equitable way. So I, I thank you for that. And I believe Dr. Rice should mention that once we were done, um to come back to you, and I will do that at this time.
All right. Thank you, President Mays. Absolutely. Uh, appreciate uh all, everybody's uh questions and comments. Uh, before I, I, I move, I, just to be clear, the uh, the normal process of communication, I, I, I know there's going to be, you know, FAQs, info sheets, et cetera. Um, typically junior high, high school uh families would contact their counselors, elementary would contact their individual homeroom teachers uh if they have questions after these. Is that going to be the process or is there a, a different way that they're going to be needing to ask those questions or who they're gonna be asking them to?
So we're gonna provide um a toolkit to principals to help them in the distribution of this information to their classroom teachers. And then we will also engage with the counseling staff and make sure that in the FAQ, we identify who the right person is in terms of to answer questions should they get stuck. The challenge is gonna be is um the caseload of a high school print, a high school counselor is over three hundred and fifty kids. So having three hundred and fifty people try to call one counselor at the same time might be difficult. So I suspect we're probably gonna be leaning into classroom teachers, but if it's about credit, meaning graduation requirements, seniors, um they're gonna also need to talk specifically with their counselor. So we'll make sure that information is included in, in the FAQ that communication is developing right now.
Okay, that, that's great, and that's probably something that would be helpful for us to have as well, so that if we get those calls, we can field them a, as well appropriately. Very good. So let me uh get to the resolution. Uh, so yes, uh with all this discussion, then I, I uh would move uh to approve the uh resolution that includes the one-time modification of our district policies and procedures uh on grading and related issues. Uh, so with, with that, I'm going to read this resolution uh into the record. Uh, whereas due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen, the normal operations of the districts uh closed on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, and the Texas governor issued executive order uh number GA dash zero eight relating to COVID nineteen, preparedness and mitigation, and through this action, in accordance with the guidelines from the president ordered the temporary closure of all Texas school districts. And whereas because the district is and will be unable to resume normal campus-based instruction for an extended period of time and administering the current policies and guidelines for student grading will be impossible, impractical or unsafe, the temporary suspension of or modification to certain policies and guidelines related to student grading will ensure fairness in the process for all students. And whereas Board Policy EIC Local currently states that the calculation of grade point averages for all purposes, including class rank for graduating seniors shall be determined based on student grades available as of the end of the fifth, six weeks grading period. And whereas Board Policy sorry, screen moved, whereas Board Policy EIA Local currently provides guidelines for student grading, the role of student assignments to ensure mastery of course objectives, as well as progress reports to parents at least twice every six weeks. And whereas each of these one-time modifications of Board Policy policies and, and grading procedures are intended to ensure fairness to all students in light of the current unprecedented circumstances. And now therefore be resolved by the board that, number one, the board determines that a temporary modification of Board Policy EIC Local shall be implemented to allow calculation of grade point averages for all purposes using those local grades available as of the end of the first semester. Number two, the board determines that any requirement that students be issued numerical grades or that the district issue regular report, progress reports shall be suspended until the district reopens and resumes normal campus-based instruction. Number three, the board determines that a temporary modification of Board Policy EIA Local shall be implemented during the district closure to allow the determination of pass and incomplete to serve in place of a numerical grade and that this information shall be utilized to make decisions regarding the awarding of credit and or promotion. Number four, the determination of local honors, including valedictorian and soliditorian determinations, shall be based on the grades available at the end of semester one. Five, the board determines that based on a student's overall performance and engagement during normal instruction as well as virtual instruction, teachers will determine whether a student has passed or incomplete the course objectives at semesters and which information will assist the district in making decisions regarding student retention, promotion and the awarding of credit. And number six, the board hereby ratifies any previous acts, including the COVID nineteen grading and graduation guidelines and further authorizes the superintendent to take any other actions as necessary to fulfill the purpose of this resolution and to ensure fairness in grading and graduation honors for all students during the district campus-based education closure, including suspension of other grading procedures, regulations, rules or practices. And seven, the authority granted by this resolution shall apply for the remainder of the twenty nineteen, twenty school year unless the board takes further action. Uh, this is adopted by the vote of the majority of members of the Board of Trustees uh of the Arlington ISD present and voting in an open meeting of the board on this seventh day of April, twenty twenty, at which a quorum was present.
Okay, so it sounds like I have a motion by Dr. Rice. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, I have a second by Mr. Will Banks. Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes, if you are in favor of the motion or no, if you are not in favor of the motion. Ms. Walton?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, booeyog, yeah.
Mr. David Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Justin Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Dr. Ann Rice?
Dr. Ann Rice, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Okay, and Ms. Keisha Mays, I vote yes. So our motion by Dr. Rice, a second by Mr. Will Banks, and a vote of affirmative from all present, the vote passes. And I will just, for clarity, the vote to consider, the vote to take action on resolution for suspension of Board Policies EIA Local and EIC Local passes. Thank you to my colleagues, and once again, thank you to um staff. So now we come to our open forum of non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any uh requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am. We have no registered requesters to speak at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Uh, no, Madam President, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like to just um sign off with one quote before we adjourn, if y'all don't mind. And that quote is, peace comes from being able to contribute the best that we have and all that we are toward creating a world that supports everyone. But it's also securing the space for others to contribute the best that they have and all that they, and all that they are. And I think that really encompasses everything that we have not only been doing at AISD, but also as a community, as a state, as well as what's going on across the nation. So with that being said, it is seven twenty-four and we are now adjourned. Thank you.